I call to order the October 11, 2016, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. Welcome to everyone joining us in council chambers as well as those watching or listening through Oshkosh media. We are pleased to have citizens participate in the local government, so welcome to all. Would the city clerk please take the roll call?
Allison Osby?
Here.
Piansky?
Here.
Stepanek?
Here.
Pat?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Cummings?
Present, seven.
Now, like Deputy Mayor Allison Osby to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people whom we represent.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One may sit with the two students come forward, please. You turn and face the gentleman behind that big box. That's all here. Let me ask you some questions. First of all, your name, your age, where you go to school, and your personal.
My name is Mark Dyer, I'm 10 years old, I go to online. My name is Kate, I'm 10 years old, I go to online. Is that right, parents?
We have a certificate for your participation tonight. Kate, this is for you. You're free to stay for the next hour and watch local government at work, or you can go home and read. Thank you. (applause)
They didn't take the first option.
First on our agenda this evening is citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? If so, please step forward to the microphone over there. I see no one coming forward, so we'll move to consent agenda items, which are items of routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that item be moved from the consent agenda for discussion. Number one, report of bills by the finance director, receipt and filing of common council minutes from September 27, 2016. Receipt of claim filed with the city insurance company A, notice of claim was filed by the Winnebago Apartment Association, Inc., and its members, in which they alleged that the residential rental contact registration and inspection program ordinance is unconstitutional. B, notice of claim by Hurley &amp; Clark Law Firm on behalf of their clients, Town of Vidlin, for damage to Wood and Shoe Road in July through August 2016, allegedly caused by hauling excessive weight loads of excavation materials. Resolution 16-480, approve joint powers agreement, Winnebago County 9/11 emergency system. Resolution 16-481, support legislation to reform commercial property tax assessment. Resolution 16-482, approve granting privilege in street to Multimedia Communications and Engineering, Inc., installation of a fiber optic cable along east side of Oregon Street. Plan commission recommends approval. Resolution 16-483, approve conditional use permit planned development for construction of a university intramaral recreation field complex, north side of Pearl Avenue from Wisconsin Street to 350 feet west of Osceola Street. Plan commission recommends approval. Resolution 16-484, approve agreement with Oshkosh City Cab for paratransit amelioratory services for GO Transit for the years 2017 through 2019, the amount of $810,217. Resolution 16-485, disallowance of claim by Marcy Howard. Resolution 16-486, approve appointment for plan commission. And the final resolution is 16-487, approve Class B fermented malt license, special Class B licenses, and operator licenses. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to any of these items on the consent agenda? I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out in Resolution 16-487, under operator licenses, I did take the online exam and did apply for a license, just to have in my arsenal for income to take care of a teenage daughter.
Okay.
So just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Any other comments from council, questions? With that, would the city clerk please take the roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Piansky?
Aye.
Stepanek?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate, seven.
There are no items removed from the consent agenda, which now takes us to new resolutions. The first is Resolution 16-488, approve phase two of 2016 Great Neighborhoods Capital Improvement Programs funding, in the amount of $46,697. Approve professional service agreement with S.E.H., Inc., for Millers Bay Neighborhood Association Streetscape Design Plan, $46,697. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? Your name and address, please.
My name is Ruth McKinley, 1560 Menominee Drive, and I'm here to represent the Millers Bay Neighborhood Association. And here's Chris.
Good evening, Chris Studeman, 1906 Menominee Drive, also on the Miller Bay Neighborhood Association Board, and just wanted to attend and support, as well, along with a number of our other members that are here too. And I guess if there's any questions about it.
Well, since you're up there, why don't you give us a little layout of what the plan is that you're working with the planning department in doing, and then Millers Bay Neighborhood Association?
Well, a couple of years ago, we started developing a neighborhood plan, and we surveyed all of our neighbors, and as a result, we came up with a plan which you and the planning commission approved a year ago. And the idea was to improve, address speeding, landscaping, the vista that we all love in our neighborhood. All those things are encompassed in a streetscape plan. And we looked at six proposals just recently from urban design companies, and selected S.E.H. for a number of reasons, not the least of which is they have a great record of working with neighborhoods, and they have an award-winning architect, landscape architect. So we're looking forward to your approval and getting started with that. And we feel that this plan will not only impact our neighborhood, but has a potential to, well, it will. We share a boundary with North Shore Neighborhood, and we feel that it'll impact nearby neighborhoods and the entire east side, because we're lucky to live in a location that, with the park and the trail and the vista, it's heavily used and enjoyed by the entire city. So we feel like this will have lots of benefits.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to ask too, so perhaps Ruth or Chris who can speak to, you mentioned some concerns with speeding and the vista. What are some of the specific, more specific things that you think that S.E.H. will address? I think I read something about undergrounding utilities, or some other things in the streetscape plan. Can you maybe speak to some of the other concerns?
Yes. Underground utilities is something that in our survey, we really would like, and we know that that's something that everybody that has, you know, utilities above ground really would love. We know that that would probably be a long time in the works, but it is something we'd like to take a look at. And one, a couple of the streets in our neighborhood have actually three kinds of decorative street lighting, some of the newer streets, and so we'd like to take a look at that, too.
Well, I think you asked about the question about what they would bring to the street design, so they have experience as it relates to how you design and how you can do things to slow traffic naturally, also how you can help pedestrian finding, how you can link that to trails and do things like that, so provide safer access for pedestrians, as well as just naturally slowing traffic.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you.
Thanks.
We'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Could we have Ellen come up?
Sure. Ellen, Mr. Davis, and Elizabeth Williams.
Oh, sorry, Liz, I didn't see you back there. Just a quick question regarding S.E.H. and providing those kind of services. Are these the kind of things, I think there have been other neighborhoods that have done similar types of streetscaping and that. Is there a reason why S.E.H. would need to do that, that the planning department couldn't do that in-house?
With this particular project, we're looking more than just a specific project. We're looking at the entire neighborhood, and we're looking for something that's going to be kind of cohesive for the entire neighborhood. And we went through a process to identify who would best be able to deliver that type of engineering landscaping design type of services. And in this particular case, we didn't think we had that internally. That was something that we went out for an RFP, and we got multiple proposals back. And based on those proposals, we thought S.E.H. would serve the neighborhood and the city best.
And then, just one follow-up, and that is, do typically when these projects, because I know that the Great Neighborhoods Project and the funds that are available, they were by application, and so would you usually ask a neighborhood to do some fundraising as well to pay for some of these types of projects?
Yes. On this particular case, we'd already obtained some community, Oshkosh area community foundation funding for this particular project, and my expectation is that the bigger dollar amount will actually be in the implementation. So my expectation is that the neighborhood will be funding, say, the implementation of this plan at this point in time, more so than the plan itself.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any further questions, discussions from council? Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Piansky?
Aye.
Stepanek?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate, seven.
Next, we have Resolution 16-489, approve residential rental inspection and complaint-based housing inspection fee schedules, inspection checklist, and five-year cycle map. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to that? If not, I will bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor?
Discussion, yes.
I would like to make a motion to divide this into the complaint-based inspection fee as part A, and the remainder, the residential rental inspection fee, the map and the checklist as part B.
You're making that motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a discussion, do you want to, you need discussion from the audience now?
You can ask if there's any.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion.
What is the reason for leaving these?
Instead of just voting no on the entire resolution, I would like to be able to show my support for the complaint-based inspection fee portion, and by separating the two, I can do that.
I guess it doesn't matter.
Any further council discussions, questions? I believe we'll now take the roll.
Allison Osby?
No.
Piansky?
Aye.
Stepanek?
Aye.
Pat?
No.
Paul Mary? Herman?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Lost 2-5.
So that will vote on the resolution?
Is there any comment on the resolution? Ellen, Mr. Davis, could you just kind of, we all received our packets, we all have the information. I know that there were some news reports of late that had some misinformation that was corrected. Could you just kind of give us the 30,000-foot overview of what this is?
Sure.
And...
There's three items that are combined with this resolution. One is the fees, which identify both the rental inspection fees and the complaint-based fees. That is one piece of the proposed resolution. The next piece would be the checklist that we want to distribute to tenants and landlords so that they know what the inspectors will be looking for on these inspections. And then, thirdly, it is the map that we identified the five different areas around the city that we do one year at a time in a five-year cycle. So we'd start with Area 1 in the first year, and Area 2 would be the second year, and so on, all the way through the five years, so we get through all parts of the city as required by state statute.
And the checklist is just basically health, safety, and...
Health and safety.
Health and safety items.
Mm-hmm.
The checklist is not necessarily looking for zoning or code violations?
That is correct. There's nothing but the health and safety code that we're looking for with those internal inspections.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, one comment I'd like to make, and Mr. Davis, if I'm incorrect in this, please point me out, but I think annually we do about 1,000 complaint-based inspections, give or take. And currently, we do not charge anything for those inspections.
That is correct.
So the taxpayers in Oshkosh are annually spending about $50,000 for these complaints, to have them investigated, citations made. So this will be a way for, to eliminate the taxpayer paying for these inspections, basically.
Correct.
Okay. If I have my numbers right. And, Mr. Davis, the complaint base came from that fee, there was a discussion amongst the rental inspection group and staff to bring that forward?
Yes.
What was the reasoning behind that?
I think the general sense of the participants was that any of the violators should be paying for the inspections, if there's violations that are actually found. We're certainly not going to charge anybody. If we get a complaint, we go out to the property and there's no violation, and nobody's going to be charged for that. So that'll be just something that the city's going to have to continue to take care of on their own. But when it comes to the landlords that do have a violation, the general consensus was they should be paying for those inspections, not the general taxpayers or permit pullers in the city.
Okay. And the complaint-based, you had the graphic up there, I believe, the complaint-based inspection violation is higher than the rental inspection?
Yes. They're typically more complicated in that there's usually a tenant involved, so there's multiple conversations and correspondence. Typically, we also talk to the landlord about all these issues as well, and try to reach some kind of consensus on what needs to be fixed when and how, so that we can walk away from the property, knowing that all the violations have been corrected, and we can close the case. And sometimes that takes multiple days, weeks, if not months, depending on the weather and when they can get a contractor to do the work. So these are just not open-and-shut type cases. These take a lot of handholding in most cases, because landlords and tenants often have their own concerns, and we try to work with all of them involved.
And when you get a tenant complaint-based, you contact the landlord immediately?
Typically, we contact the landlord, but we'll usually actually go do the investigation in some cases before we're even in contact, to see if it's even worth the time that it takes to follow up with the landlord. There's always going to be a violation if we've talked to the landlord.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Davis, see, this recommendation came from a group of stakeholders that helped, worked with us, with staff, to draft the ordinance that we...
That was one thing that I heard from the group, especially the existing landlord, saying that if there's a violation based on a complaint, that the cost of that should be covered by the landlord who is violating the code.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Would the city clerk please take the roll?
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Piansky?
No.
Stepanek?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate, 6-1.
Resolution 16-490, accept and direct staff implementation of recommendations of Walker Parking Consulting Study of Downtown Parking. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this resolution? If not, I'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I have a question for Mr. Collins. Who is coming forward as we speak.
Mr. Collins, you're halfway here, come on up.
You were anticipating. In the proposal, there's quite a bit of cost to implement the majority of this program. Is that already in the preliminary budget for 2017?
The, it is for the operating expenses. Ms. Larson was working on the budget. We worked on it both ways. One way where if this didn't pass, which would be status quo, and then we worked on the operating budget, a second way if it does pass. But as far as the capital costs, that's something that Mark could probably comment on, but we're looking at sharing those costs with the bed, and Mark could jump in, but I know we had some ideas about how to do that.
You know, I guess my concern is, I support 90% of the plan, but I don't believe our citizens are going to be happy about going downtown and having to pay to park, when they can go to Target and Walmart and all the other stores and pay nothing.
Yeah, I guess...
You know, I get we have a parking problem, but I think the parking problem is more of where are the parking lots, where are they located, how do I get to them? I want to go to this destination, that destination. It's a signage issue more than it is, and I understand it's about revenue, but I don't believe, and I know the bid supports it, but they're also the ones that wanted parking removed 10 years ago or 15 years ago. So are we going to spend all this money, put the pay stations in, all that, and 10 years later, another council's going to say, uh-uh?
Yeah. I may not just address a couple of concerns. As far as free parking, there still will be free parking available. It'll just, it'll be in the off-street lots. So, you know, for citizens, if you wanted free parking, for instance, the lot behind, say you were going to go to Kits and Fall or any of those stores in the 400 block, there's, free parking would be available in the city parking lots behind the store for two hours. There'd also be free parking on-street for the first 30 minutes, so...
But you still have to go to a kiosk, enter all that information.
Right. For the on-street, not for off-street. Off-street would be free.
Free off-street.
Well, no, it's, they originally talked about three hours, the bid wanted it to go to two hours, so that's what the resolution includes, is they were concerned with employees' parking, so that's why they wanted to reduce it to two hours. But the reasons the bid supported it are that, number one, they think it'll better manage supply. Another comment they had made was they think that it helps with the perception of downtown as it being a destination, a cool place to go. They think there's some psychological connection between that and the paid parking. And number three, their goal, the history of it, like Mr. Herman was alluding to, was originally the bid was formed to allow free parking. So they started a bid, they contributed to it, and then they used that money to help the city with capital costs and associated parking. However, over the years, they've evolved more to a marketing-type bid. They've annually reduced the amount they contribute to the parking utility, to where the point now is, they realize they're going to have to continue to support the parking utility, at least for the foreseeable future, but their hope is, is if we go to a paid parking system, that somewhere down the line enough revenue will be generated where potentially, at some point, they could not need to contribute to the parking utility. Now, whether, they realize that might or might not happen, but those were the three main reasons they supported it. But if Mr. Roth wanted to jump in on the capital cost, I think he can answer that question.
With respect to the capital costs, the bid has indicated that they would be willing to fund approximately $20,000 a year. What we would look at is, try to figure a way to squeeze that into our CIP. It's not in our CIP right now, because we recall the CIP was prepared back, really back in July, and we have been, we have made a lot of changes to it since then, so this will be one of those changes that we would have to make. Ms. Larson and I will develop a strategy on how we'll do that. The idea is half of it would come from the general fund, it would be general obligation. As the Walker study pointed out, the capital improvements for the parking utility is going to continue to, need to be funded by the city, but then the bid is willing to fund the other half of that.
And the nearly $400,000 for the pay station, that initial cost, is the bid contributing anything towards the initial cost of, or that's it, just the $20,000?
That's the half, that's the $400,000, and half it would be, city half it would be the bid.
And then just $20,000 a year from them?
That would pay the, that would pay for the capital cost over 10 years. That would be $200,000.
And the employees would be us solely?
That would be us, but the, as the Walker study shows, and that's where Jim has more information than I do, but the idea was those would pay for itself between revenues from the parking utility, as well as fines that go to the parking utility.
Yep. Yeah, that's true. So the initial capital cost, we would have to front, but the thought is, it looks like they're projecting that the operating income, after we take the expenses out, would be about $50,000 a year. So as that money is built up, you know, that money would be used to pay for, you know, if we need to upgrade the parking stations, as well as to help pay for that upfront capital cost to pay it back as time goes on.
I think I'm with Counselor Herman, and I support the comments that he has. A lot of this plan I like. I like the signage, that's something that we've never had before. Somebody that hasn't been to Oshkosh or downtown, that certainly, I think, would be helpful. And I think even to those that sometimes frequent the downtown, but a lot of times go to Appleton or go to the south side to do their shopping. I think where I'm really struggling, and this is as a former person of the Bid Consortium, as well as a business owner downtown, I'm struggling with this, as long as I can remember, the parking utility has always been underwater. And I remember back in the day when we used to have the meters there, and we ended up taking those out. And there was a lot of reasons for that. Maintenance of the equipment, having a staff person on hand, and the concept is good, and I've seen it work in other cities, other townships, and municipalities. I'm just not sure that downtown is the right spot for it, and I'm saying that because I still see to this day, if somebody has to park on the street, and they have to park on the 500 block, and they want to get to the 400 block, they don't want to do that. And so what I see is that we already have that challenge. It's funny, it goes away on Saturday when the farmer's market is there, but really, Sunday through Friday, that's still very much the attitude. If they can't park directly right in front of the store, or they don't have a... If they can't park directly right in front of the store, they don't have an interest. So then you have a pay station, so then you're asking them to basically walk to the pay station, pay, come back, put it, you know, in the window of their car, and then go back out. If it was something in which the initial outlay of capital was something nominal, I think I could buy into it, but when you're talking pretty close to almost half a million dollars output, and I appreciate the bid's support and wanting to contribute, and I see where they're coming from, so this certainly isn't that. I just, I'm struggling with spending almost half a million dollars, knowing that potentially we're still going to be underwater, and we've always been underwater, is my perception and my knowledge, and then seven years, 10 years from now, we're taking it out. So it makes it difficult. I'll support it, and I'll vote yes on the overall plan, but when it comes to the expenditure of that, I'm going to struggle with that until somebody can provide something, information that would sway me in that.
Yeah, just to clarify, these are going to be, it's not going to be pan display. They're recommending license plate readers. So what that would mean is you would go to the station, and they'd also have a mobile app, but you'd either go to the station or to the app. You'd put your license plate number in, and then you'd pay for whatever session that is. So theoretically...
And I understand that, but if you're, I think of the younger generation, you're going to do that, know how to do that. When you start to get into other age ranges, I've seen it. I've seen it at the university, and they struggle with it, and then they end up just driving away. So I like where it's going. I know what you're saying. How applicable is it and how much of the actual city of Oshkosh residents as well as our outsiders are actually going to do that and want to do that? I don't know. I'm skeptical.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely understand. That's something that if we would go forward with this plan, that's obviously an educational component will be a part of it. You know, Walker showed me kind of what they've done in other municipalities, and they do an education piece up front, you know. We'd obviously get out ahead of it, this is what's coming, and then they actually have sessions on that demonstrate how to use them, and they actually have their, like in this case, we have, we'd have park enforcement officers. They get out there ahead of it, and they help people, you know, with how to use the stations, demonstrate it, answer questions, you know, for a few weeks before it's implemented. But yeah, I understand, there'd definitely be a learning curve.
Do you know how often, when Walker does a study for a particular town or municipality, how often they recommend the pay station?
I don't.
Okay.
You may have already said this, but can you just clarify again, then? Did the bid say that they would put a significant portion towards that initial outlay, or where are we at with that?
Yes. What their general understanding right now is that they would contribute up to half, so 200,000, like Mark had said. So they're thinking right now they would probably contribute 20,000 a year over 10 years is how I understand they're currently thinking.
The idea was when we met with them, we told them that it really was, they needed to make a good faith effort for this to happen. Partial answer to the question earlier about, you know, how does Walker's studies get implemented? They did not recommend this for Appleton, so I think they took a look at our situation and said, "Our situation's different from Appleton." Their situation was garages. In this case, it's parking lots versus, they did study the feasibility of a garage, but didn't recommend that. So I don't think they have necessarily a one-size-fits-all bent to it, but as we explained it to the bid, there had to be something that the bid was going to continue to do to support parking, and I think they agreed to it. I don't know how the whole board went, but that was the budget committee we met with, Jim?
Yes, well, they actually, so they had a special board meeting, and they voted six to zero in favor of the Walker implementation plan. So they generally, they support it, and their thinking is, I believe I'm speaking for them now, is I gave you their main reasons, but I think they're thinking if they're going to contribute, you know, annually towards the parking utility, that this, there's at least a ray of hope that, you know, there'll be some income generated that could be used for parking, whereas the other, the current model is they contribute, you know, annually just to kind of try to tread water. Like Mr. Roth said, we're never going, we're not going to solve the parking utility issue because the capital costs are still going to need to be funded, the majority anyway, through the CIP. However, with this program, they're estimating conservatively about a little over 49,000 a year in net operating surplus that could be used for parking purposes. So I think kind of the choice I see you have is, I don't think anybody disagrees, you know, that the marketing and better signage and those things, we should do. I think, I haven't heard anyone say that we shouldn't do that, but the question it'll come down to, do we continue treading water like the parking utility is, which we can do? I mean, there's a benefit to that. You have free downtown parking. So there's kind of the status quo option, which doesn't cost us anything. And then there's the second option where we put the paid parking in like Walker's recommending, and then we, I would assume then we would be committed to it for some time, that that's how we're going to move forward, and then we would have some operating surplus that could be used to help the parking utility and to help reinvest in downtown parking. I think those are really the two alternatives.
Mayor, question I got is, we have a lot of special events that closes the downtown area and the surrounding downtown area, so now that's lost revenue. Are we going to pass that along to the user groups to make up for that lost revenue? Because they can't use the pay stations? I mean, lately, we're being accused of being a money-grabbing council in the city, and now we're going to go and put pay stations back in there, and yet, how's that going to affect special events in the downtown area when they can't? I mean, to me, I think we should go forward with everything except the pay stations for a year or two and see if that changes the attitude. One of the biggest things that Walker's study said, we have a walking problem in Oshkosh. And Councilor Allison Osby said the same thing, people don't want to walk two blocks. Now you're going to make them pay and still walk two blocks? They ain't going to want to do that. You know, and I understand the bid, and there's been a lot of change in the bid, and so their board is different than the bid that was there when it was formed, and why are parking taken out of the downtown area? But I just think that it's going to come back to haunt us, and spending that kind of money in three or four councils from now, after all the complaints from the citizens and the bid again, we're going to be taking them out. I just think that's what's going to happen. But if we put signage up, we put apps up there, we improve our website to where parking lots are, more of the university thing, I think we should give that a try first, and then if that still isn't working, we're still getting complaints of people working in the downtown area parking where they shouldn't be parking, then I would support probably paid parking. That way, we can control it better. But I think we should give the alternative first, that opportunity before we go ahead with paid parking downtown.
You know, I mean, I agree with about 98% of what you're saying. You know, the thing is, part of the reason that you put in, and Walker did explain this, was why you have, you institute the fee structure is because it's to assist the usage of the parking. And if we can continue to put the signage in, we can put the signage in, but if we continue on the same way that we're going, if you don't, it's carrot, you know, carrot and stick, is if you continue to reinforce the same behaviors that we've been doing, we are going to continue to get those same behaviors. Now, one of the things that I note here is on one of the pages, this is where it compares paid-on-street parking, free-on-street parking. There is an asterisk, it says that the free-on-street parking model does not include OPD labor and operating costs. And I think this was asked at one of the workshops, do we know what those costs are?
Yeah, well, that asterisk means, under the current scenario, the CSOs, the community service officers, do they enforce parking as time allows? So they're not, there's nobody dedicated to enforcing parking, whereas under the paid model, they're recommending to 30-hour-a-week enforcement officers, which the revenue would pay for those officers, but that's the difference. So we're not incurring any extra cost currently, although, you know, you're right, there is some cost associated with that, those CSOs doing enforcement.
The idea is that the CSOs are out there as a matter of course. If they have time, they'll do parking enforcement. If there's other activities, they will be focusing on those support activities that they provide to the police department. So a nice way of saying that you cannot guarantee that they're going to be doing parking enforcement. So you won't get the revenues, you won't get the, but you don't have the expenditures. I mean, there's, you've got a clear understanding of what the issues are. There's no question about that. It really is what do you want to do moving forward to address the parking issue? And I respect the opinions of everybody here. You know, we've been wrestling with this for a number of months, and I think Jim is just trying to, using the Walker study, what can we do to improve the situation? And it's a bit of a controversial issue, and I understand that.
I would seek direction from the city attorney. How would we go about, basically, would we go through an amendment to, make an amendment to institute the signage, the updating of the GIS maps, the educational program, but then to strip out the capital cost? Or can we approve this? And it's just, because the capital would have, this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is just accepting the study. The capital expenditure would be made as part of the budget process. Is that correct?
Correct.
So then we can, so, but...
I'll let you finish.
So, you know, there's, as with anything with these, there's two kicks at the can. There is accepting this because as pretty much everyone here admits, this is the plan that we want to follow. However, I have an issue with this, I have an issue with this, another person may have an issue with this, but we have the opportunity to move forward, and when it comes time, it's through the budget process that we determine the actual way that this will be instituted.
I just, when I pulled up the resolution to read it, there is a reference to the paid-on-street parking, so you could amend it to just delete the reference to paid-on-street parking at this time of year if you don't want to go ahead with that portion and then leave the rest. There's also paid employee off-street parking? Does that get removed?
Well, what that's referencing is what we already have, which is permit parking.
Okay.
There are two references in the be it resolved section. One says, I'll just read the top of the resolution, and council can do what they wish. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council, the city of Oshkosh, the common council hereby accepts the recommendations of the Walker study, providing for free parking and paid-on-street parking in the downtown area, identifying areas of paid unlimited-on-street parking. And so if those were areas that you wanted to change, I would recommend that you take those out. The wherewithal is refer to them, that Walker does recommend them, this would take it out if that's what you wanted to do.
I think you would do a motion to amend it to remove the references to paid-on-street parking would probably be the easiest.
I would move, I would make that motion.
Why don't you wait till council...
The only thing I just wanted to say, and I appreciate the comments, Councilor Peck, because I don't disagree with that either. My only thought is, if it's something that the majority of us are saying we don't know that we're ready to embark on, 400 and some thousand dollars is a lot in our CIP, and if staff knows ahead of time, between now and come now, what, next week, and then moving into November, that money staff could already be thinking possibly would be going somewhere else, so I'm just trying to make it easier on staff by giving them a heads up now. You know, and if the majority supports it, well, you know, then you know where it's at. Otherwise, we get into the budget time, and we've had this happen before, you know, when we start to pick apart, you can lose things, and I just, I, it, you know, I guess I would prefer to discuss it now and make that decision now rather than wait till we're at the height of budget and we have 50 other considerations, million considerations that we have to take into account.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that, you know, and whatever, you guys can do it however you want. However, we, the city attorney and I, based on which way you're leaning, we would have to rewrite our parking ordinances, which would, you know, would come back through the council, but that's going to take some effort to do that. If you want to move forward towards the paid-on-street, we have, you know, a lot of legwork that needs to be done, and then we'd probably, depending on which way you go, be looking at engaging Walker potentially for some help with some RFPs to obtain pay stations and those types of things. So, I mean, I'm fine either way, but I do appreciate your comments, and it would help as far as the legwork that we're going to need to do and also through the budget process because it would help Ms. Larson, the finance director as well, to when we're doing the operating budget, you know, which, because like I said, we have two models right now. We have one kind of as-is and one with paid-on-street. So sometime in it, before the budgets are done, we're going to need to know which direction we're heading.
Would we have to discuss this elimination of the paid parking with the bid, since they have, their board has said they agree to it?
It was an advisory recommendation, so, I mean, the ultimate decision is yours. That was an advisory recommendation from that board?
Well, I guess...
So you could send it back if that's what the council would like to do, but you don't have to.
And I guess I'll ask that because like I said, I, you know, I understand where the bid is coming from. I support the bid. I want the bid to succeed. I have history, Tom's wife has had history in the downtown area and has history with the downtown area. I mean, I guess I would leave that to city manager Roloff or yourself to say, do you guys want, before we, I guess, make a decision on this, do you want a courtesy meeting with the bid to talk about our discussion tonight and have us actually postpone this for two weeks?
Yeah, I was thinking that, you know, in terms of, the only reason I wouldn't recommend postponing would be because if you want us to keep moving forward with the signage and things like that, we probably want to get moving on that because one of the questions I was asked, regardless of which way the council wanted to go on this, when is it going to get going? And I think people are genuinely interested in the signs and would like to see that done, and that's part of the option with no paid-on-street parking, and we could keep moving forward with that.
Divide the issue and...
Yeah, I guess...
Move forward with the signage.
Yeah, I think it's valuable to move forward with the signage, but I do like the idea of getting together with the bid. I think that's a good idea.
So are you essentially saying that it would be better to pull the pay station?
So you could, what you could do is divide the issue into the references to paid-on-street parking being part A, everything else being part B, and then have part A held over for discussion with the bid and vote everything else through and allow that to proceed forward.
And then what would the wording be for that?
Well, I'll make a motion to separate Resolution 16-490, accepting the recommendations of Walker Parking Study minus the paid stations, making that sub-B so that it could come back to council for a later vote if discussions with the bid determines to bring it back forward. That work? That way you get...
So you have a motion to divide the issue?
Yes.
Into A, everything but paid parking?
B.
B, paid parking. It needs a second.
Second.
You could vote on dividing the issue.
From the public, like to address this issue? If not, I'll bring it back to the city clerk for the roll.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Curate 7. Now you have part A, everything but paid parking before the council?
I would move part A.
Second.
Discussion from the public. If there is none, I will ask the city clerk to do the roll.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik? Stepanik?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now we're part B. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to, do we need a second motion?
I think it would be layover until such times the council has an opportunity to meet with the bid. Doesn't give you a date certain, because it's, you know, it's a busy time right now, we don't want to overpromise.
The council or the staff meeting with the bid?
I think there's value to having, I have in the council.
Parking utility should be included in that, too.
I think that would be very appropriate, because, you know, certainly our recommendation to council was this, and I don't think it would be fair for staff to put the bid out there all by themselves. We were working with the bid closely on this, so I have to take some ownership to that, and I don't want the bid feeling like they were left out. I think it would be appropriate...
Does that have to be a workshop with those groups, or could we get on their agenda at a bid meeting, as many council members that can make it, make it? Or how do you want to move forward with that? Because we already got a couple more workshops, well, budget workshops scheduled already.
The more, the better. I defer to you for discussion on this, I think it's a good discussion to have.
Again, I was reaching out to Ms. Larson, then would it be basically to, the motion would be to layover to a time, it's not, it's not a time certain, but to layover for a period of time to meet with the parking utility and the bid to get their direction and buy-in related to the implementation of paid parking?
And then direct the city manager to bring it back at that time?
Then that is the motion.
Well, wait a minute, but both of those entities have already supported the paid parking. They both sent the wherethes, was the bid, and so was the parking utility already voted in favor of the paid parking, so...
Yeah, I don't think it was one of those issues where it was a line drawn in the sand. I think there's a good dialogue going, and I think that should keep going.
And being on parking utility, I can tell you that the piece that was left off of it, that you picked up, we voted on it, but there were questions about whether or not the bid would contribute, and so I think you kind of stepped in after that point, so it would be appropriate to bring both of those in.
No, I'm not saying not bring them together, I'm, just the way the motion was going to be set out, it's like, if they approve it, we're going to go forward with it. Well, they've already approved it, and we're not going forward with it, so now it's a discussion, just a discussion item, and if council wishes to bring it back as a new resolution to vote in the paid parking, we can do that. So would it be to...
You could send the whole thing back.
Or you can, or you just vote on Plan B until point where you decide to, where you decide to pick up paid parking.
But it maybe have that meeting with the two entities to discuss where we go forward from here, I guess, or something.
If you wanted to generically word it, just to leave it until we have an opportunity, we, staff and council members, and if necessary, bring it back with a joint meeting, kind of see what kind of reaction we get, take it to the parking utility, see what kind of reaction. The bid, we don't have a formal liaison, I know many of you have gone to different bid meetings in the past, let's just see what kind of reaction we get, and then we can come back once we feel comfortable. If you want to leave it up to, I guess my judgment or discretion, I'm willing to take that chance and...
Yeah, I guess, I guess my point was because we work so well with the bid, and we've been very supportive of the bid, I just feel it's a good courtesy, because they may be under one assumption that this is going to come through and fly through, and I think, I do think they will understand that we do have some concerns. We just got the preliminary budget tonight, granted it's the operational, but again, we, you know, Tom and I are part of the long-range finance committee, and where we, in previous years, have borrowed fifteen, nineteen million dollars, I mean, we have really cut ourselves, and we've been disciplined to eleven-point-four. And so, you know, four-hundred-and-some-thousand, almost five-hundred-thousand dollars is a big chunk of what we're already scrimping by on, so I think they'll understand, but again, I think because we have that great relationship, I hate to repeat myself, but, you know, I think we owe them a courtesy.
Oh, yeah, totally.
So I guess, what is the purpose of the part B, in so many words that we can't vote on it?
Well, you've already voted on part A, so that, you've approved that, and that's...
So then are we just laying over part B until...
For further consideration, due to budgetary reasons.
If you want to direct me to report back to you, then I can just, you know, report back to you when something occurs. Certainly, I'll give you, I'll put it on the agenda as, under my reports, just to keep you apprised of what's going on. Jim, obviously, is going to step forward and reach out to the bid and the parking utility as he would normally do anyway, so if you want to just leave it until, until staff reports back to council with how discussions have gone. Maybe we can do a joint meeting, maybe a couple council members can go to a bid meeting, just kind of leave it open-ended, layover until, until staff reports back to council on progress.
So then are we moving to postpone indefinitely?
Okay, your original motion never had a second, so you can just make a new motion.
Do you want to read your note? I have, we're going to layover until the end, the city manager will report back to council.
Okay, it's time indefinitely, all right, then that's, then I would make that motion.
Second.
Take the roll, please, you solved our issue.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Stepanik?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have council discussion, direction of the city manager, and future agenda items. Number fifteen is future agenda items.
I think we're going to be busy with budget.
I thought so. Sixteen, future workshops, all-day budget workshop, workshops, October seventeen and eighteen.
Just want to make a, we were planning to, I believe, start at eight o'clock. Does anybody have their, the schedule's in the budget, so instead of me guessing at that, I think the schedule's pretty close to the front.
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
Is it?
So we will have coffee and other items, breakfast items, to keep your, so eight until four-thirty. The mayor mentioned that you might be late on one or one of those days, or both?
I might be about an hour late on both days.
Okay. Mr. Peck, I think you indicated you were going to be out of town and business.
I am out of town, traveling all next week on business.
How about it, everybody else? Good, we're good?
Good.
Okay. So we'll plan, so Deputy Mayor Allison, okay, you've already covered that base, okay, very good. So we'll start, and if there's any, you know, Mr. Peck, if there's anything we can catch up on after you get back, and Mayor, we can always catch up if you're just going to be an hour late, but everybody else will be there. We'll plan for lunch here at whatever the break time is, so we'll, we'll plan those accordingly.
I plan on reaching out to you and Ms. Larson upon my return.
We'll be, we'll be looking forward to it, thank you.
The budget workshops are in City Hall, correct?
They'll be right here in 404, we're going to use the same format, the council indicated the, just more of the collaborative with the department that's coming up and at the table and whatnot. And Ms. Larson and I will be there all day. So thank you. As far as the budget workshop on November second, we'll really determine the agenda and how long we need for that, really depending on the first two days, and we'll take it from there.
Mark, may I ask a question? Ideally, for staff, what is the ideal date that you want to have the budget passed? Is it November twenty, what is it, twenty...
It's that Tuesday before Thanksgiving, that's the second?
Twenty-second.
The fourth Tuesday, yeah.
Or are you thinking, so not the first week of December?
Correct, because we have to get...
Or I mean, second week of December.
We have to get the tax bills out, and typically the tax bills are mailed literally the first couple of days of December, isn't that correct, Pam? Yeah, so generally, we order for that. But we do have the second, the workshop on November second, we also have the hearing on the, let me do the math correctly, the ten...
The second of November.
Oh, it'll be the day after election day, correct?
I'm sorry.
Day after election day will be, so we'll have that day, and that's when we do the public hearing on the budget, so, and that's usually when we get sort of the last bit of feedback from council before we prepare it for final approval.
And I think what I would like to strongly encourage, because there is that kind of crunch of time to get, to get all of the tax bills out and all of that, is that I think, you know, if council has any recommendations or anything like that, the quicker we can get through the budget book so that we're prepared for Monday and Tuesday, and then moving forward, then that way, there's no surprises coming at the final hour that would then potentially delay it another couple of weeks into December.
One last question, where are copies of the budget available?
Well, the, all the copies of the budget that we have are on your D S, we will have additional copies available at the library, the city clerk's office, and then we will be putting it online as well.
Okay, thank you. This is, next, next is citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only, statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the city of Washtenaw, and the common council may address at a future meeting and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council? I see no one coming forward. Next, we have council member announcements and statements, there are none here.
Actually, I would, I would like to make a brief announcement. Day-by-day Warming Shelter Open House is this Saturday, they are opening for the season Saturday evening, and that open house is for the general public to come and tour and help stock the shelter, that is from ten to two at the Day-by-Day Warming Shelter on High Avenue.
If there's nothing else from council, city manager, announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a couple items of agreements that I've approved that are under the threshold for council approval. Our audit contract with Schenk is up this year, and Ms. Larson and I discussed it and felt with the change we're making in our software package, it's probably good to keep them on board for the foreseeable future, so we're going to have an extension of the contract for one year at this point. Then we also have a couple, a contract with Badger Laboratories, just something that, working on with the pre-treatment program over at the, at the treatment plant, and then a public informational meeting for the Jackson Oregon Street Bridge. I know some of you have attended the public officials' meetings, this is the one for the general public to just take a look at the different ideas that are out there. I think we have some of those plans available, if you haven't already seen them, what the DOT has provided us, James?
I have one hard copy in my office, but that's about it right now. The DOT will be getting a website published here, hopefully in the next week or two with all of the information and all of the alternatives that they're analyzing as part of the study. I know they had not gotten it up yet, but they're hoping to get it up within a week or so after this public information meeting.
And that is?
That is at the...
Thursday, Senior Center, five to six-thirty.
Yes, at Senior Center North.
And then last, but not least, trick-or-treat hours are five to seven PM on October thirty-first, so just letting everybody know that that's, those are the hours we're going to have, and everybody get ready. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Roloff, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.